If everybody could mute. Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Thank you to East Hampton Media as always for bringing these meetings to all of us. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic that seems to be going on forever. Under an executive order by Governor Baker that was extended to April 2022, I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or the public hearings. We will be having a public hearing at 6:15, so those who need or want to speak during public speak, if we go beyond 6:15, we will start when we complete the public hearings. So that's it. We are now called to order. Barbara, could I have the roll call?
Hey, Coniff. Here. Salem Derby.
President.
Erica Flood.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Yeah.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rust. Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zera.
Here.
Okay, well now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Nation.
One nation indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 1st?
So move.
Motion second to approve the minutes of September 1st. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Hey, Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Okay. We now have public speakers. Anyone from the public would like to speak on anything other than what is in the public hearings. You may now go ahead and down on the reactions line, there is a raise your hand button if you'd like to do that. I'm not seeing any.
Hi, Pat Coniff. I'm trying to get my new just won't switch. This is Julie.
Julie. Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to raise my hand.
Okay, no problem Julie. Go ahead and if you could please identify yourself.
Oh, certainly.
Name with what precinct.
Julie Thomas from Precinct 1.
Okay.
So I just wanted to briefly just kind of address the last public safety meeting that was held on September 14th. That's the meeting where the committee had reviewed the final report for the mayor's pledge and give it approval. I had attended the majority of safety meetings and at times I spoke in support of the East Hampton Police Department. The unfounded and at times defamatory texts made by others directed at the men and women of the East Hampton Police Department. I also spoke of division and the need to come together and collaborate together. And up until the last safety meeting, I felt the lead of the meeting, Council Gomez facilitated these needs fair and with such an unbiased manner. But it wasn't until the last meeting, Council Gomez's final comment that kind of struck me with much disappointment. He thanked the community, saying that they had good sessions and learning experiences listening to both sides. And he went on to say that they were passionate people from both sides, people who believe we should not have a police department and the other side who feel the police were God. And he thought that the report represents both ways. Well, as someone from the latter, I would just kind of like to respond a little bit to Council Gomez's comment. It made me feel as if as a community member, my comments were disregarded and as of no value. So no, I don't think the men and women of the East Hampton Police Department are God. And yes, I support the East Hampton Police Department and believe that we are fortunate to have a department that is so good. I don't think any department is perfect, but I think what our department represents was really, it still is very good. So I just wanted to say that our officers go to work every day and they go with the first priority of safety and trust within our community. And they go to work, not knowing really what the day will bring. So we need to keep that in mind. And I just wanted to give a little background that since July 2020, police officers killed had surged 28%. This year alone, there were 48 police officers killed in ambushes. And so far this year, a total line of duty deaths were 286 of the officer. And of those that died, four of them died by assault, 41 died of gunfire, three were stabbed to death, 16 were killed by vehicle assaults, and 10 were struck by vehicle. And that's just the name, not even half of that. So these officers too left behind families and friends and children. And so when I support our police officers, I'm not supporting the bad police officers out there that happened to George Floyd. I'm not supporting them. I'm supporting our police officers. And I just wanted you guys to keep that in mind. And I think that an apology is oh, so thank you.
Thank you Julie. Anyone else for public speak? Okay. We have public hearing at 6:15, but I will now entertain any communication from elected officials, boards, and committees. Anyone have anything to say from there? Omar, Council Gomez, sorry.
By the way, Omar's my name, but thank you. Gracias, señora presidenta, por esta oportunidad. I'm starting Spanish because since September 15, we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month. It's celebrated, right? And it should last until October 15. In this month, the contributions that have made Hispanic in the United States, I would like to mention some Hispanic who have done great things in this country. Cesar Chavez, born in Arizona, to Mexican-American family, the defining moment in Chavez's life came when his family moved to California during the Great Depression to become farm workers, cementing his fight for farmers' rights. Julia Alvarez, Dominican-American writer that has been enchanting readers with her words since early 1990s. Ellen Ochoa. Ochoa was born in Los Angeles. Years after the paternal grandparents immigrated from Mexico, Ochoa made her mark by becoming the first Hispanic-American woman to go to the space with a nine-day mission in 1993. Sonia Soto Major, of course, I have to add a Puerto Rican one, right? Woman from Bronx, New York. Sonia Soto Major became the first Hispanic-American to serve as a member of the Supreme Court. And it's here, some of the local Hispanic impacting in our community. We have mixer Alvarez, historian EHS. Yvelisse, that she works in the administration and the office at EHS. Liz Rodriguez, the owner of East Hampton Clay, and many more. And I will missing so many, so many names because I bet you we have a great Hispanic adding stuff in our community. These Hispanics every day pave the way, the way so that we can walk through it. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for making me, making the path easier. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Gomez. Anyone else? Not seeing any hands. Oh, okay. Counselor's there. I'm not looking at the screen, just so you guys know. I'm looking at the list of people, which is on another screen, so I apologize. Go ahead, Counselor Zera.
Thank you, President Coniff. And thank you, Counselor Gomez, for bringing that to everyone's attention. I appreciate the work you do and being your colleague. Just a couple of quick announcements. I just wanted to give a shout out to really lovely community thing that happened this last week. There was a constituent that reached out to a few people about a young person in our schools who is lacking appropriate transportation to school. They're working on some bus issues, et cetera. And this individual was using our Great Valley Bike Share bikes to get to school, but ran out of money to use those. And there's a wonderful individual named Robert Sharland, or Bob the Bike Guy, who has an organization called Pedal Through Youth. And Gail Cannon, who works with the high school, connected with me. And I reached out to Chief Alberti, who I knew was connected to Mr. Sharland. And this young man was able to get a bike in 24 hours with a bike lock and a helmet and is now at least able to get back and forth to school and not spending resources that he doesn't have on Valley Bike Share. And again, I think they're working on the bus. So that's just really wonderful community collaboration. There's ongoing source to see cleanup this month. I know that a bunch of my colleagues participated in the cleanup before Mill Pond Live. This continues through the Kudak River Conservancy. There'll be a cleanup this Saturday at 8:00 AM over near Arcadia, Old Springfield Road, near the Pearlports Pond Bridge. It's the East Hampton Expo Cleanup Crew is the name. I could also send out an email later. Jeffrey Thelen is leading that group. And just on the topic of cleanup, as some of you probably know, there's a bottle bill currently at the State House that will increase deposits and expand what we consider depositable bottles and also create deposits for nip bottles. So if you have a chance to advocate for that, please contact your state legislators. And I appreciate everyone who continues to collect and deposit nip bottles in our nip bottle collection bin outside of 50 Pace, and that seems to be going well. So keep keeping our city clean. Thanks, President Coniff.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. I have no announcements. Our vice president is not here. Is the mayor here? I think she had told me she'd be a few minutes late, so I don't think she's here yet.
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, then why don't we go ahead and start the public hearings a couple of minutes early? I'll take a motion to open the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
Motion second to open the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Hi. Public hearing is now open. We have four items to discuss. One item has three parts. So the first one is an interdepartmental transfer of $1. Counselor Gomez, if you would please walk us through this complex math.
Thank you, Madam President. Basically, this is part of the budget. The library is based by a formula, and when they do the calculation, they was off by a dollar. This at the end doesn't change anything at all. It's just $1 that we had to add, and it's pretty simple.
Do we have any questions of any counselor? Oh, we do have a question from Eric Poole. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, President Coniff. I appreciate having this time. So, well, I'm sorry, my name's Eric Poole, Precinct 2. I am a professor of library and information science and am very proud to have served in the past as the 101st president of the Massachusetts Library Association. So now while on the surface, this seems like a very simple $1 appropriation. I think this provides the opportunity for us to have a larger discussion about what I think is actually a pretty concerning situation in East Hampton. Now, Counselor Gomez is correct. There is a formula for minimal municipal appropriation for library funding in order to stay certified with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. East Hampton has historically, for as long as I can remember, in all of my years here, funded our library to the absolute bare minimum to stay certified. In this case, it's we need $1 more to stay certified. We don't ever fund it $1 more. We don't ever fund it a cent more. The Board of Library Commissioners sets a very, very low bar for financially, for the financial responsibility for a municipality to stay certified with the state. So let me give you, and this information is from the most recent State Board of Library Commissioners report. There are 53 municipalities in Massachusetts that are between population size 15,000 to 25,000. Of those 53 municipalities, East Hampton spends per capita, per resident, 51st out of the 53 municipalities. Now, across the entire Commonwealth, there are 351 municipalities. Our per capita spending on library services, we come in 325th. Now, for a city that likes to fashion itself as thriving as a result of the creative economy and the knowledge economy, I don't think this funding reflects our priorities at all. And it's been said many times that a municipal budget should reflect the priorities of your community. And I think we have a really, really pretty wide disconnect here when East Hampton is claiming to be, you know, like I said, a thriving community where creativity and knowledge-based. Sorry, I'm at a quick loss for words, but where the knowledge economy is such an important thing for us. Libraries absolutely support the most at-risk members of our population and they provide resources to people who otherwise would not have access to them. So I ask you all going forward in the future, please try to do better. It's absolutely essential that we have a strong library in East Hampton. And as we're funding it right now, we're literally just ensuring that the lights are on and the doors aren't locked. Thank you, President Coniff. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Any counselors? Counselor Kozinski.
I just would like to thank Mr. Poole for bringing to our forefront very important statistics and information that I know I will ponder heavily and I believe the other members of the council. If I could dare speak for everyone, I believe everyone on this council is very supportive of education and know risk and value our library. So thank you for being there and for sharing those statistics.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing any. Counselor Gomez, do you want to make a motion?
Yes. By the way, thank you, Eric. This is a motion. I move that the city transferred the sum of $1 for the reserve funds to library to correct their rounding error in the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners calculations.
I'll second that. And if it was possible to make an amendment, I would. I can't believe it's possible for us to amend the motion, so I'll second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next up is supplemental appropriations for Reservation Road and Main Street.
Okay, I'm going to start with the Main Street. We have requested the appropriation of some $230,000 from the Cannabis Establishment Fund. The Department of Public War has contracted the Warner Brothers Construction to pave Main Street from Park Street to the South Street. This project will include replacement of the drainage structure and the installation of the RRFB and main medical industry. The total cost of this contract is $1,335,000 from where $930,343 of this cost being covered by the City Chapter 90, Chapter 90 funding for the fiscal year 21 and 2022. Basically, they're going to pave all this street and they're going to use the funding from Chapter 90 from the fiscal year 21 and 2022. And with the permission of the person of the council, we have Greg Narman here. If he had to add something else for this?
Sure, go ahead, Greg.
Omar pretty much covered it. We had about a 70,000 or so shortfall in what we could fund with Chapter 90 and what we needed to do the entire stretch of road, the whole stretch of road needed to be done. And Mayor and I discussed that it would be a great opportunity to try to get more done than we could, than we were able to by looking to cannabis funding. And fortunately, we're able to pave all of Main Street from south to Glendale, catch base and replacement. I can tell you it's moving along. It's moving along well. And we're hoping to have the road milled the first week of October at this point. So that date could change, but it is, project's moving along nicely. This funding is also going to cover police details for the work, construction oversight, and survey of the main and South Street intersection. We're looking to take a harder look at that intersection with the new school coming soon to make it safer for pedestrian access and vehicle access to the new school.
Thanks, Greg. So just to clarify, so you're paving from South Street up to Glendale?
Oh, I'm sorry, from South Street.
Up to the library, I thought.
Up to the library, yes. Yeah. Half of the project, we carried Glendale to the library as an ad alternate on the project. I always screw that up.
No worries.
But we are doing the whole thing.
And in committee, we talked about the fact that this pavement is a 20 to 25-year life. Is that what we talked, is that accurate, Greg?
Yeah, I would hope so. I think it should be, you know, we'll keep an eye on it. We'll keep the road sealed and, you know, we'll crack seal and keep it patched where needed to try to really get the value out of it for the city. I can't promise it, but I would, I'd say we shouldn't be looking to do anything on Main Street again for a while.
And are we going to put in a flashing beacon at Glendale? Did I hear that in the meeting?
Yep, main and Glendale, there'll be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon similar to the two we have on Cottage Street.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the public? Anything from the counselors? Oh, hang on. Go ahead, Shelby. Donovan.
Hello, my name's Donovan Lee. I'm a resident of Ward 4 in East Hampton. And I just wanted to talk about what large sum of money of this project is going towards police detail to direct traffic for this. In Massachusetts, it is legal to have civilian flag people to direct traffic for this kind of construction work. And it's a lot more cost effective and like you guys were just talking about, trying to go as far as you can with as little money as possible. You know, it's a fiscally responsible way to bring down operation costs of constructions like this. Also, as someone that goes through quite a bit of construction for work, oftentimes driving large trucks or trucks with trailers, these construction can be hard to navigate with that kind of equipment. And the police are oftentimes either off to the side drinking coffee. There's multiple police officers just talking to each other. And there's construction workers who are doing the traffic direction. So I would just urge you to look into someone, you know, getting civilian flaggers to do this, to bring down the operations cost. And even, you know, in my opinion, probably make it a little bit easier to navigate these kinds of construction, you know, areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelby. Okay. Anyone from the council? Okay, not seeing any. Counselor Gomez, if you'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, so we'll do it. By the way, thank you, Shelby. And probably that's going to be a discussion that we can have with Greg in the future. I move that the city appropriated the sum of $230,000 from Cannabis Establishment Fund to the Main Street Capital Project to fund police detail, construction, oversight, and survey, as well as the shortfall between the contracted amount and available Chapter 90 funding for the fiscal year 22, Main Street paving and drainage project.
Motion is second for the Main Street paving project. Any further discussion? Counselor Derby.
I just want to, you know, echo what Donovan said. I think that makes a lot of sense to me. So I hope that Greg will have the opportunity to be able to look at how we detail this particular project. And if we can find some cost saving using civilian flaggers, I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Any other counselors? Any discussion? Okay, Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak. Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Gomez.
Yes. We have now, give me one second where I'll go to the documents. I'm here. All right. So we have three different, four different motions. Some is for money and the other one is to give the mayor the power of making an agreement. But I will start saying that for the past six months, the planning board has been assessing the potential, potentially for the city, which is partnered with Pat's Conservation Trust and Curse Trust to acquire 5.5 acres at the end of the reservation road. And an option agreement was prepared and sent by the owner to give it a city addition time to prepare the grant application and secure the funding. We, the planning board, we are now seeking the authorization of the mayor to enter the agreement to allow the city additional time to secure funding for the acquisition. Two different, two separate supplemental appropriation requests. One is for $245,000 and 412 for reimbursement through the land grant program and $121,588 from the CPA. I'm pretty sure if we approve this and we got the grant, we're going to get a reimbursement of the money. And that's going to be $245,412. And I think we have the city planner Jeff Bag in the call. And with the permission of the person of the council, I want him to add anything else from about this.
Go ahead, city planner Jeff Bag.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Counselor Gomez, for the introduction. I really appreciate that. This information is in the September 1st packet of the first city council. And I do want to say, I do want to lead with some, actually some really good news, which is that we learned yesterday that we got the grant, the land grant was announced yesterday that we've been awarded the $245,412. So that is amazing. And, you know, the grant administrator, you know, I always ask and they had previously kind of said, you know, it's 100 days, you know, 120 days from July. So we weren't really expecting this so early. But it's really with great pleasure that I can actually share with you that we've been awarded the grant. It doesn't change all that much. As Counselor Gomez introduced, there's two requests. The first one is in the amount of the land grant that we requested. And their expectation is that the city or town has this positive vote that the funds are available before we do anything. And so that's what we're doing tonight. And we have been to the Community Preservation Act Committee twice to talk to them about sort of the city's portion, which I'll use the rough numbers, which was 130. I don't have the numbers. It's on my other screen. But CPA is voting unanimously to approve those funds. And the way it works is the land grant covers 68% of the cost of the acquisition. So the city is paying the remainder. You know, in quick summary, we've worked really hard. I do want to thank the landowner because through this series of events, you know, the landowner, you know, it came back to talk to us about, you know, a conservation acquisition of this property. And so, you know, that's, there's some people here who might speak to this, but that's, this property is important because it's been thought of as an important parcel for over 20 years. It's on the foothills of Mount Tom. It's in a really key area for the city. We recently updated our open space and recreation plan. And the area around and adjacent to Mount Tom is pretty much ranked one of the highest important areas for East Hampton to be focusing on. So it is a compliment. important areas for you to be focusing on. So it is a compliment to our other work. You know, we acquired twenty-three acres farther down on East Street and we're building a trail. This is a smaller acreage, it's five and a half acres. And it will be preserved for habitat value, open space protection. And there's an an opportunity for people to walk up Reservation Road and access Mount Tom. So so you know, there's more to this, there's there's details and all that can be found in the packet. But I'm really excited to to kind of be requesting this. The funds from the city, the two hundred forty-five will be reimbursed. And then the third, the other action is to seek, you know, city councils, city council will authorize the mayor to enter into this option agreement. And it might sound like we don't need that anymore, but the reality is that this secures us nine months to finish, you know, some due diligence on the property, do maybe a survey and other things and then and then come to closing. So we have some time built in. And so that's important kind of, you know, it's an important step for the city to to match the owners, you know, willingness to do this. So I think maybe with that I will either answer any questions or or just yield to any public comment.
Councillor Gomez, I see your hand. You look like you want to say something. And you're muted.
I just find out that, yeah. Yes, I just want to ask to the city plan Jeff Bag if he can, and I do the same at the finance committee. The simple way to explain to our community why this is good for for us to buy for the community, the regular constituents in in our city there is always asking why we should buy this or why shouldn't buy it, why this is good for the city to buy it.
Yeah, I covered some of it, but I'll, you know, I guess I'll strengthen the idea that we have, you know, we have a document, it's called our Open Space and Recreation Plan. You know, which is our guide for important areas for recreation or conservation. And you know, the the last plan was from two thousand fourteen and it also articulated the importance of Mount Tom, the foothills, you know, so if you think of that area along East Street, that's a really important target area for for East Hampton. This parcel is important because it was slated for development. And so, you know, the the urgency was there. And what we found through the process of going through due diligence is that it's really important for habitat for rare species. It's habit, it's, you know, it's it's existing forested land that is important for climate change and resistance to climate change. And there was a lot of concerns about the the potential to develop the land could have pretty, pretty substantial impacts on drainage and runoff down Reservation Road. You know, and our zoning right now doesn't prevent the development. And so we we see this kind of urgency for this parcel. So so and then, you know, the funding sources, that's one of my jobs is to take projects or issues or concerns and line them up with appropriate funding sources. So the land grant, you know, has this cycle. The land program is for this purpose, you know, to set aside land for, that's important for habitat or open space. And so so it's it's pretty targeted for this area. The other thing I did want to mention is that we are continuing to try to demonstrate that we are taking this area seriously and that we will meet property owners at the market value. Because we want to continue to preserve more land. There's, there's a lot of unprotected land in the foothills of Mount Tom. And the last thing I'll say is the his, the the city has a really long history of doing this. There's a great other example on Hendrick Street, which also kind of borders the area between one forty-one and below. And, you know, over decades, the the city acquired a hundred and eighty-three acres in that area. And it's actually like a really important, it's a model area that that many people have applied a lot of effort to do. So we're, we're kind of looking at that focus in Mount Tom. And we're looking downtown or in the mills or other areas for for more dense development. So so that's a really key strategy is we find development areas that are suitable, close to transportation and close to goods and services, and then we protect, you know, the outlying areas. So that's, that kind of fulfills, you know, the the general goals of our master plan and open space plan.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Councillor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, Jeff just said a lot of the stuff I was gonna say, but I guess I could, the shorter version of what I had prepared to say was just that, um, you know, as the precinct three city councillor, when, you know, the news of, you know, this parcel potentially being developed came up, it was an extremely important thing to my constituents. I received about as much email about this as as anything else that we've, you know, addressed over the last year. So I was delighted when I saw that this was a thing that we could do. I I really do believe that the mountain is is maybe the singular greatest sort of like natural amenity that we have here in the city and that there is sort of a feeling that that it would be a huge loss to see it, you know, sort of developed into something that 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 wasn't you know, as ecologically important or as as naturally beautiful. And and that again, like there, there would be runoff concerns for people in my precinct. So I really can't speak highly enough for the this project and and just sort of to echo something that Jeff just said, you know, I think that, you know, I've been working a lot on trying to to work on making it easier for people to build much-needed housing along with many of you, you know, much-needed housing in the parts of East Hampton that are suitable for development. But I do think that there's the flip side of that is looking at areas which either for ecological reasons or other reasons are are not suitable for development and working to protect those regions. So I think this is a great example of that and I really can't endorse it any further.
Thanks councillor Peak. Councillor Flood.
I want to preface this with saying I do have a background in environmental science and ecology, so I absolutely see the importance of saving this piece of land. I'm extremely happy that Jeff informed us we got the grant. But I also want to say to my community members that I would love to see the kind of passion that everybody puts behind preserving green space to making affordable housing happen in East Hampton. We seem to be completely okay with seeing high-value real estate disappear from Main Street and come off our tax rolls from Williston. Nobody says a word about that, but we fight hard to save these ecologically important spaces. So as we move forward as a community, I want to ask all of you who value the green space to please put some efforts towards valuing, valuing affordable housing parcels, parcels where we can build that kind of stuff for our neighbors that are in need. This is our senior community, these are our working families. Many of them, if you look at our housing production plan, are single-parent households. And we need to do better on that front. So I just want to give a really big round of applause for everybody who worked on this and just ask you to please pivot some of your passion towards that issue that's in dire need in our community as well. But congratulations for this win.
Thank you councillor Flood. Councillor Kuzinski.
Jeff, thank you so much for all the hard work you do to preserve the land here in East Hampton. I have always said that the probably the single most important amenity that all of us share in the city is the view amenity we have of Mount Tom. That is the one thing that pretty much no matter where you are in the city, you can see. And that makes East Hampton very special. So kudos to the work we're doing to make the that land preserved. Once it's, once it's developed, it's gone. It will forever be there or be there for our lifetimes and our children's lifetimes for sure. So I think that's why we need to make that an important priority we have. And I hear councillor Flood your your remarks regarding affordable housing, right?
Somebody is unmuted. Whoever is Mark's iPhone, if you could mute yourself, please, that would be helpful. Thank you. Okay, any other councillor who'd like to make a comment at this time? Nope, anyone from the public? Not seeing any.
I may, I would like to say a few words.
Who who are you?
I am Donald Farbaugh from Reservation Road.
Oh, there you are, Donald. Sorry, I couldn't see you. I've got two pages of people, so I can't see you. Okay, go ahead, Donald, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, President Anaf and council members. Thank you very much for this meeting and notifying and Jeff for all the work you've done and this wonderful news. I just wanted to say that there are, there's a coalition of people who are strongly in support of this as Thomas Peak mentioned, passionate about it. And the most recent, I just looked at the petition has over one thousand six hundred and forty-nine people who've signed in favor of adding this land to the city's holdings. And the reasons have already been so nicely summarized by the people who've spoken. You know, it is of course adjacent to, and and we think of it as a part of Mount Tom. It's a part of critical habitat according to the state's biomap two. It's a, it's a tremendously rich resource for a number of different wildlife habitat. It's an, it's an, it's a kind of an informal easement between the the city and the state reservation, which many people use. As a resident on the road, I see people up and down every day who see tremendous value in this. And of course, during the pandemic, that's only been accentuated. And so there are several people I know at the meeting who have worked hard to help support this initiative. And thank you councillor Flood for what you mentioned. We will, we will not and should not forget the people in need of housing. Nonetheless, there are some people here who may want to add their words of support if there's time and interest in hearing them.
Thank you, Donald, and thank for your, thank you for your passion around this, Donald. You were very instrumental in in getting agreement from the folks who live in that area and and working with Jeff. So thank you very much for your hard work. Katie Carr.
Hi, I'm Katie Carr. I'm a Ward three resident. I work in land conservation and I know well the wildlife benefits of conserving land that abuts other conserved land to create corridors. I wanted to also mention that climate change and public access to open space are public health issues. And the city using funds to acquire this property would create safe pedestrian access. You can get to the mountain on sidewalks from the center of the city until you cross East Street and get on the Reservation Road. And you can also do it for free, which is a huge benefit. And I think the city acquiring this property would formalize this free pedestrian access to Mount Tom and make it a more well-known entry point. The only reason I knew that I could get to Mount Tom that way is because a neighbor happened to tell me a number of years ago. And it's been a huge asset for me and I know for a number of my neighbors as well. And so I'm just, I'm fully in support of the city using funds to acquire this. And I wanted to thank Jeff Bag for his work on getting the grant. It's very exciting. And I also wanted to thank councilperson Flood for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. John and Greta Holbrook.
So I'm John Holbrook. My wife Greta is here. We we are residents of Reservation Road and strongly support this grant, certainly for all the ecological reasons and the value to the community of of the greens, of the green space. But I think there are also some practical considerations. As the former Emergency Medical Services Committee and City Commissioner of City of Springfield, I try and think how I walk up the the Reservation Road every day, how an ambulance would get up there, how fire equipment would get up there in an emergency. It's very difficult to, it's hard to imagine how you could have adequate access to that, to the the upper portions of the land. And then as you increase the impervious coverage, the drainage coming down the mountain is already occasionally problematic when it rains heavily. Couple of years back, we almost had a glacier going down East Street. And I think the the cost to the city of maintaining a road in 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 the winter going up that steep of a grade with the pitch on both sides going up and down makes it really not very practical, I think, in terms of a suitable for for development. So I think there's this, and then lastly, I guess, people driving up thinking they can go all the way and then getting halfway up and trying to turn around the traffic problems, that that would be caused if there were five building lots up there, I think, are very significant. So I would support it both from a practical point of view, but also from the environmental point of view. We are strong supporters of that. And actually, our family is partners in preserving eleven acres, almost, almost next to that going up the mountain. The hayfield going up from East Street and up towards the water tank. And so we're already committed to preserving that area. And I think this is a strong, a strong step in that direction. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Peter Steinberg.
I am also, thank you. I'm Peter Steinberg. I'm also a resident of Reservation Road and want to thank the council and my neighbors, particularly Donald, for leading the initiative to raise awareness of the of this vital issue of trying to forestall the development on up above the area where where our houses are. I just want to add that, following up on John Holbrook's comment about the traffic going back and forth, there are a number of map apps that suggest that you can drive all the way up from Reservation Road to the visitor's center on Mount Tom, when in fact there are barriers and a pretty washed-out roadway that prevents people from driving up there. So I I just encourage any of you who might might be inclined to contact Google Maps or any of the other map apps that they need to correct and update their maps of Reservation Road so that people following, people driving with their GPS aren't tempted to drive all the way up. And just also to echo what everyone else has been saying about the runoff issue, which is significant even without the development and the ability for emergency vehicles to access and turn around the upper portions of the road. It's absolutely vital that we keep the land undeveloped so that so that it can be preserved for the use of not only for people who who live along Reservation Road, but for those who come to visit from within and outside the city. So this is excellent news for for all of us. And again, want to congratulate everyone on the council and all of our neighbors for helping to make this happen.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? And second call for anyone from the council for any last remarks before we move to a motion. Okay, councillor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make the motions, I I want to say two things. The first one is that I missed that is, that I didn't tell the council that we vote two to zero at the finance committee to approve all these motions. And now we have four different motions. Should I just go one by one, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm gonna apologize if I miss for now in any of those words, alright? Because English is not my first language. I'm trying my best.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. Alright, the first one. I moved that the city appropriated the sum of two hundred forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars with no cents for the general establishment fund for the for for fiscal year twenty-two land grant Reservation Road for the accusation of five point five acres for open space on Reservation Road, including closing coast and closing coast and due diligence.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the appropriation of two hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Any further discussion? Barbara.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peggy Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Motion passes.
The second one.
Next.
I'm, I moved that the city appropriated the sum of one hundred twenty-one, one hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred eight eighty-eight for the following CPA Reservation Reserve for Open Space eighty thousand, CPA Reserve Fund for forty-one thousand, five eighty-eight to Reservation Road OS Acquisition for the acquisition of five lots for open space protection, including closing cost and due diligence.
Second.
Motion is second for the CPA appropriation. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak. Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Motion passes. Councilor Gomez.
I moved that the city council approve the following resolution. City resolution, city council resolution, a resolution to file for accept and expend a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, local acquisitions for natural diversity land grant program to acquire the Reservation Road property. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, is making funding available through the local acquisitions for natural diversity program. Whereas the land program was established in 1961 to a municipal conservation commission in acquiring land for natural resources protection and passive outdoor recreation purpose. Whereas the permanent preservation of open space is a priority of the City of East Hampton. Whereas the City of East Hampton has identified as assembly of five parcel consisting approximately 5.52 acres of land described as Accessors Map 147, parcel 33.2, parcel 33.3, parcel 33.4, parcel 33.5, and parcel 33.6, the Reservation Road property, which is six to acquire for the purpose of providing publicly accessibility to protected open space in East Hampton. In accordance with the city master plan, an open space and recreational plan, whereas the city has negotiated a purchase price of $350.0 for the portion of the Reservation Road property. Whereas the city believes $350,000 represent the fair market value of the Reservation Road property. Whereas the city has projected up $17,000 in additional project costs in which $10,900 are eligible for reimbursement on the land program. Whereas the city intend to submit an application to the EEA for the land grant to fund and reimburse up to $246,412, which represents 68% of eligible project costs. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to take such act and action responsibly necessary to acquire Reservation Road property that the mayor is hereby authorized appropriate for the Community Preservation Act funds, annual revenues, and available fund of necessary sum of $121,588 in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section AC, and Chapter 44B, Section 11, and/or any other enabled authority for the purpose of acquiring the Reservation Road property that the mayor is hereby authorized and requested to file an application with the EEA for the land grant to fund and reimburse up to 68% of eligible project costs that the mayor is hereby authorized to accept grant fund and execute contract and any amendment thereof and to take such other actions unnecessary in order to carry out the term purpose and condition of EEA DCS land grant program. And five, that the Conservation Commission, with the mayor prior approval by authorization, to enter into all agreement and execute any of instruments, including the convened perpetual conservation restriction in the property to the Coastal Land Trust or any other organization qualified or willing to hold such restriction in accordance with the MGL, Chapter 184, as required by Section 12A of Chapter 44B and Chapter 293, Section 10 of the Act of 1998 as amended.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second for the resolution to, is this for the authorization of the mayor? Is that what that one is? No?
No.
Okay, any further discussion? Barbara.
Lindsey Rothschild. Lindsey.
Yes.
Okay, Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Motion passes. Councilor Gomez.
I moved that the city council authorize the mayor to enter into an option to purchase certain real property located at the end of Reservation Road, Accessors Map 147, parcel 33.2, parcel 33.3, parcel 33.4, parcel 33.5, and parcel 33.6, with Susanne Scallion and Rosemary LePage Scallion pursuant to determined condition of the document entitled. Option to purchase agreement signed by the owner on July 14, 2021, attached here though, and incorporate her name.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second for them authorize the mayor to make this purchase. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Motion passes. And I think that's it for the public hearing. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Motion is second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearings are now closed. All right. Thank you, everyone. That was very informative. Thanks, Jeff. I'm going to ask anybody with your camera still on, who is not an elected official, to go ahead and turn it off. You can certainly stay. We're just going to enter into our working portion of the meeting. So now we'll go to reports of standing committees. Finance, Councilor Gomez.
Before that, no mayor communication?
She's not here.
Yeah, she is.
Oh, all right. Mayor, do you have any mayor communications?
Nice try, President Coniff. Especially on an evening that I actually do have mayor.
Well, you know.
How did you know? First, some quick notes. One, our auditor, Hadal Patel, passed her state auditor exam, one of only 13, throughout the Commonwealth and was recognized by the Massachusetts Auditors Association at the Auditor's Conference that just ended. And she's driving home. So very distinguished honor. There was a class of 58, only 13 passed, and Hadal was one of those. So we're very fortunate to have somebody so talented on board as an auditor. The COVID-19 free testing is going to happen this Sunday and next Sunday at the farmer's market. You don't need insurance. You don't need anything. You just walk up, you get tested, and then they will text you. You have to give them a mobile phone, and they will text you your results in two days. So I did it this Sunday. Tuesday, I got my result via text, and it was negative. And I'll be going back next week as well. Testing is very important to trace where COVID-19 is in all of our communities, and it gives us more insight to how to mitigate. Along that matter, it was great to see folks wearing masks even outside. And I would remind folks that our numbers will go down with more mask wearing and eventually giving us more opportunity to not wear masks. So please, mask up, stay masked up. The, there, actually, I'm going to hold that one. I do want to mention NotifyMe, which is a service you can sign up for on the city website, easthamptonma.gov. And NotifyMe is a service where you can get notified, literally a text, about when agendas and meetings are happening for city council, DPW, for community events, for city-sponsored events, for flu clinics. And you can pick what you would like notifications for. They come out quite quickly. You can choose, you know, I choose all of them. But, and also you can, you have to opt in, but you can also opt out of those text messages, you know, depending on how useful you found the information. We would love, one, as many people as possible to sign up. We'll also be using this for another way to communicate roadworth when we have control over that. But would love community suggestions of maybe what other channels or streams we could notify me to. You cannot just opt into one and get all of them. That's the other thing I'll note. You need to pick by topic. It's very easy to do. Go to the East Hampton MA.gov website. It opens on the left. There's a little button about that big. It says NotifyMe. Click on it and it'll walk you through your options. So on that. And then I just wanted, I've gotten a couple of emails and questions from those on this body, but also the community around ARPA funds. There's been a lot in the news about what other communities are doing with the American Rescue Plan money. Just a quick summary, I'm putting together a white paper of the steps when we know a little more about regulations and distributions, both internal and external. The City of East Hampton received directly, I'm sorry, the City of East Hampton will get directly from ARPA $4.7 million. $1.6 million of those dollars is a local formula that we get because we're a city with 16 some odd people in it, and it also has waiting for poverty and disenfranchised population. So that's $1.6 million. The second bucket of ARPA money East Hampton will receive will be non-functioning county money. So Hampshire County doesn't have actual county government anymore. So each one of the municipalities in the county get extra money from, or get money, I shouldn't say extra, direct money from ARPA to our accounts, and that is $3.1 million. Those two, the money comes at two times. There's two distributions. One is about now. We've received the first local payment of $828,000. It's in our account. We have not gotten the first part of our county money. We will get the second part of the city money in about a year. And the same with the county money. There's a year in between both of those distributions. The distribution will be informed in East Hampton by existing publicly created plans, like our master plan, our wastewater and storm plan, the open space and recreation plan, the housing production plan, the art visioning plan, the downtown strategy plan, the local rapid recovery plan, as well as other general fund items that were, you know, and capital improvement items that were really out of our reach, might be considered. The two other qualifiers there is, one, compliance with the federal laws and regulations, as well as state regulations. We learned from CARE Act and FEMA in the first go-round that those regulations and compliance requirements change in the middle of you spending that money. And that's one of the reasons why I'm using the publicly funded plans. It's well documented, and we have community backup of what they'd like, what we'd all like to see. They're prioritized, and we have an idea of the cost. So we can relate it back to our community and community need. A lot of the state and federal officials are counseling all municipalities to use them on transformative investments, not one-time spending. We're going to do a little bit of both, I think. And I say I think because we've hired a consultant who has 22 years of municipal planning and finance experience. And he will be taking all of the ARPA money, putting it into a large spreadsheet with prioritized projects, possible projects, and aligning that with ARPA money. But it's very important. I feel that every dollar of ARPA is used to the best and highest standard, public standards. So into that spreadsheet or database will also be columns that will identify projects that maybe could be funded by, by, hold on a minute. I lost my, oh, funded by FEMA, which money is still available, CARE Act money that could become available when FEMA reimburses CAREs, cannabis money, free cash grants, and CPA money, as well as grants that are outside of, outside just more typical grants, like the Mass Works. And we're basically going to look at all of these projects, and the consultant will start weighting it. There will be projects that are because of COVID-19, but the expenditures are better attached to the regulations around cannabis than ARPA. So, yes, you know, I think we want to get the money on the street as soon as possible, but we want to do it with some measured thought to make sure the money is going to the best places possible, highest and best use. If there's any ARPA money, we can leverage with any other money in our budget. We want to do that. And we want to create things that will have a long-lasting effect. The plan that I'm speaking about, once it's in writing, will be forward-facing on the website. And also, there will be this spreadsheet or maybe database. I'm not sure what format it is best, will be public-facing on the website and updated on a regular basis, depending on functionality. It could be once a week, it could be once a month, but it can be no less than once a quarter. So that, I wanted to share that one of the expenditures that we will be making with the ARPA funds, it will be broadband feasibility study, which is the next step to forming or actually putting in motion our municipal light plan. We've been doing the legal work around the municipal light plan for some time now, but we really need a feasibility study to figure out how much it'll cost and what it will cost. Is there a public appetite for municipal broadband on the prices that will come with the number of poles we have and all those other things that Tom Peak mentioned about? So that's an example where we can get rolling on ARPA funds. The last comment, this is a really good example. A big push for post-ARPA spending, you have to know where you're spending it by 2024. You have to spend it by 2026. And then in 2027, you go into single audit to make sure you spent it the right way. The anticipation is starting in 2025. There will be requests for interest in shovel-ready projects. So spending money on the broadband feasibility study with ARPA sets us up for more money to build out broadband infrastructure. So we're doing a lot of this feasibility work to basically have projects in buckets. And we have some idea watching the infrastructure bill going through Congress, what those buckets will be. Without doubt, broadband will be one of them. So it's just one example of how we would use the money and my approach to it.
Is that it, Mayor?
Yes, except for a thumbs back to Tom Peak. Oh, one more thing. Also, I've gotten a lot, we've gotten a lot of questions. I know also members of the council have. So there is a severe busing and transportation shortage that goes from PVTA down to our school buses, down to special education transportation, where we don't have enough vehicles and we don't have enough drivers, especially with COVID and different regulations. There are many parents and students in the city who would like to opt into transportation or are qualifying for transportation. And we do not literally have enough buses for them because the companies don't have drivers. We are working very hard with our transportation companies in the PVTA to address this. And the school department has a, there's a meeting coming up before October sixth to really dive deep into this. We have additional concerns with the new school opening in the next year, year and a half, because we'll need more busing because of the location and the less folks will be able to to walk to school. So I just wanted to put the word out on the street that this is really a national crisis. And we are both on city and state, city and school, working towards it. Example of that is one of the city's outreach fans that we got for meals during COVID. It's fifteen passenger. The athletic director is using that to drive our students and our athletic teams to and from events. So we're all pitching in to to make it work, but it's, it's something we're going to hear more about and it's. The fixes are tough. I, I don't actually have one, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm good.
Thanks, Mayor. All right, moving on then.
Madam President, JP, he's handled.
Okay, JP.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you so much.
I'm used to it.
I, I just wanted to congratulate the mayor on her hard work here and especially with the ARPA money and the broadband. And throw in the kudos to Councilor Peak for his hard work on, on this project among his committee. Thank you so much. It's great to hear.
Thank you.
So I guess I do have to give equal time to any other counselor who would like to ask any questions of the mayor. Sorry, jumping the gun here. All right. Now we're going to move into finance. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. By the way, you give me a, a work to do and I did.
I know.
So we basically cover all the old businesses, but I want to start the, our next minute is going to be September twenty ninth at five PM. We went to all the old businesses, I'm pretty much sure. And about the COVID funds, thank you for the mayor. She covered that for me. I will appreciate that. And we have some new businesses that I will ask Madam President if I can do all at the same time. At least someone else, someone of the council believed that we shouldn't move it to the, to the finance committee.
Well, here's the deal. I, and Barbara, you can correct me. Dan does a first reading on each of them individually. Can we do that and then move them as a group?
Yes, and even schedule public hearings all at once.
Okay, so Omar, if you could read each one as a first reading and then make the motion to move them to committee.
Okay. All right, for the amount request of forty-nine thousand dollar, forty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-six and ninety-five cents to be transferred from the PEC account, PEC access account, forty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-six with ninety-five cents to the transfer to PEC access account. The amount request will be used for the following purpose, forty-nine, forty-nine thousand eight, five hundred eighty-six with ninety-five cents to give approval to the spend from the PEC access receipt reserve account for the cable related purpose consisted with the franchise agreement.
Sir.
Can I keep going?
You, please.
Okay, I'm now requested four thousand nine hundred to be transferred from eighty-seven cannabis stabilization fund to be transferred to equipment, four thousand nine hundred. The amount request that will be used for the following purpose. The phone will, the phone that required mesh for nineteen thousand AFG grant to replace all outdated hose and nozzles, as well as purchase a hose rack to keep the spare hose on. The, the, the second one, the third one, request for the city's pay to share in the scope of CPA funded project at Old Town Hall. The next one, a mall request thirteen thousand nine ninety-five with twenty-four cents to be transferred for cannabis stabilization funds to be transferred to the FEMA AFG new ambulance thirteen thousand nine, thirteen thousand ninety-five dollar with twenty-four cents. The amount request will be used to follow in purpose. The, this phone will be used as part of the required match for the federal grant in the amount of two hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred and four for the purchase of the new ambulance. And we'll make a motion to move that to the finance committee.
Second. Motion second to move the appropriations, transfers and the relook at the Old Town Hall CPA distribution of funds to the finance committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
And Peg Coniff.
Aye.
And should I make a motion to set a public hearing for October sixth for these appropriations?
Yes, yep.
The motion to move, to have a public hearing at six fifteen and October sixth for these appropriations.
Second.
Motion second to set a public hearing for ten six at six fifteen. Any further discussion? Barbara.
I just want to clarify. I think it's just on the financial things, not on the CPA, correct?
Yeah, you're the financial.
Yes, sorry, yeah.
Okay. Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak. Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Is that it, Counselor Gomez?
That, that concludes.
Madam President.
Yes.
I think the pay plan belongs to you all too.
No, it does not. That's going to be an ordinance.
Okay. Historically, that does go to finance.
Yeah, if you look, I, I, I.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. I, I thought we were going to say, don't you guys do pay plan?
Oh, it's actually part of the rules that it goes to finance. I thought it would go to ordinance originally.
This is why we need counsel risk.
Historically, it does go to finance.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll just add it to our list. Why don't you go ahead and move these as well?
Okay, let me find.
Well, now we got to really work, Counselor Gomez.
I found, I found it.
You and I.
Yes, we have a lot of stuff to do. So I will make a motion to move to the finance committee to amend chapter seven to add the following position to the classification and pay plan. Community social worker at grade F, information technology director at grade H, change pay plan grade for a public health nurse from grade E to grade F.
Want to just move all of them? There's three.
I think I say all three.
Oh, did you? Okay. Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Who seconded that? Sorry, I missed it.
I did.
Okay. Okay, Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
And that concludes.
Wow, we're going to have a long meeting on October, whatever, September twenty ninth. Okay. That is it, public safety. Counselor Gomez, anything there?
Me again. Thank you, Madam President. To first, I want to. Do I need the extension for the major spread remain policing? Even when we are done with it and we're going to present it for the next council?
Yeah, because you do.
Expire.
It's going to expire, yeah.
All right, I'm going to ask for both. I'm going to do it at the same time. We're going to act ninety days, but we're going to end with that one. I'm going to ask for ninety day extension for the major spread remain policy report and to the request of the review of safety of the sidewalks on South Street and Main Street intersection.
Second.
Second, motion is second for a ninety day extension on both of the items in the public safety agenda. Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
So for the intersection and Main and South Street, we still, we brought the DPW director Greg and the city planner Jeff back to talk about it, to see what we can do in the future. One of the things that we approved tonight, this morning to do a survey and that we're going to wait until the survey came out with the results so that we, we have a better idea what we can do in that intersection. So we're going to keep it in the agenda. About the, about the report. Thank you, Julie, for, for being in that many public safety committee meetings. I have to say that I'm going to repeat it tonight. At the meetings, we have basically sometimes two groups, right? And I think the report represent what we saw at the, at the whole meetings from four groups and the people who was in the middle. And the people who's in the middle is one of, one of those guys, me. And I'm going to do this for disclosure. My dad was a state police. One of my best, my best friend that he was a state police do and he got shot. And one, one time that he responded to a call. So I know both sides do. We finished the report. I'm really happy with the report. I'm really happy with the response for the public coming to the meetings and tell us what they believe and what they think about the report. And I did include it in this package because there was a lot of stuff in this package that I don't want to, that I don't want to give you overload, but I'm going to send it to every single council tonight. So that way you have enough time to read it, to evaluate it. And if you have any questions, so the next meeting, we're ready to answer anything you, you guys have. And again, I thank you for the other two counselors at the committee because I, I think this report represent what we saw and what we read in, in those meetings. Thank you, and that concludes. Oh, and our next meeting is going to be October nineteenth at seven PM.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Appointments, Counselor Rothschild.
Here I am, okay. Second, so we had two appointments at our last meeting that we went over. Steve Litwin and he, he attended. He was up for the Board of Public Works. He has had a long career in safety and he's retired now and he wants to contribute to the community. And I think we're lucky to have him on the Board of Public Works. The other one was Caitlin Trice. She did not attend, but she sent us answers to the questions and she is a lifelong resident of East Hampton and she has problem solving skills. She likes to manage projects, be creative. She has young children. She has a, spends a lot of time on the rail trail and has some ideas of how to, how to, you know, how to be, how to elevate it from where it already is, which is beautiful and great asset. So I know that the Man Hand Trail Committee needs more people. I saw them at the committee fair. I saw one of their members and she was, what she was saying, I need more people. So I'm glad that Caitlin is up for joining them. So I moved to confirm the following mayoral appointments. Steve Litwin to the Board of Public Works with a term expiration of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And Caitlin Trice is the Man Hand Rail Trail with a term expiration of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion is second for the two mayoral appointments. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Great, now I move to move the following mayoral appointments to the appointment committee. Steve Litwin to the zoning board of appeals with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Cindy Terrell as the council on aging director with a term expiration ten oh six, twenty twenty-three. BJ Church as building commissioner with a term expiration ten oh six, twenty twenty-three. And Laura Fisher is an alternate to the agricultural commission with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion second to move four mayoral appointments to the appointment committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next meeting is Wednesday, October thirteenth at four PM. We are going to try to always have a meeting on the second Wednesday at four PM. I know Lindsay Mailer asked, she tries to make the process as clear as possible to people in the process. So maybe for the flow chart that will help for now, second Wednesday is at four PM. Appointment committee, and thus concludes.
Thank you so much. Ordnance committee, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. So we met last week and we discussed some of our new affordable housing amendments and briefly discussed the straw amendment and new information that has come to us as well. So we are going to be meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth at six thirty. At six thirty, we're going to be meeting with some members of the EDIC to discuss some of the issues that they wanted to discuss with us. And so we're reserving the first thirty minutes of the meeting for that. At seven o'clock or shortly after seven o'clock, we're going to, I've invited members of the council of disabilities to come and, and give feedback on the revised straw language and the new information that we've received. I don't know if anybody has had a chance to read the straw report that Counselor Zaret put together, but it is worth reading. It's a lot of information, but it's definitely worth reading. And so anybody that's interested in the straw issue should please come at seven o'clock next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, because that is where we're going to be talking about that particular issue. So if you're interested in that, then please come. And I believe, I believe we don't have any new business. So unless my colleagues can remind me that I missed something, that would conclude.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Property, Counselor Zaret.
No report.
Okay, rules in government relations, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. We met a couple of days ago, Monday, and we discussed two resolutions. One regarding the decriminalization of therapeutic psychedelic plants, fascinating discussion with a lot of really interesting, passionate people. And the other was the climate emergency resolution. We voted two to zero to accept or to recommend both of those resolutions. Tonight, I wanted to invite Counselor Derby to read the, the climate emergency resolution and for us to vote on that. I, I would like, maybe at our next meeting, to do the, the one on the decriminalization of therapeutic psychedelic plants. And the main reason is that it's sort of complex. There was some discussion in the meeting about potential amendments. And I just wanted to give Counselor Zaret a, a chance to sort of submit or circulate the, the final draft that we worked on. I would do it myself, but it was on his shared, he was the one sharing the document from his computer so that everyone can take a look and just if there's any questions, we can, you know, people can have a time to digest all of that before we discuss it. We did not discuss the remaining thing on our agenda, which is the rule twenty thing. And the basic reason for that is that's about remote participation. And so long as we are remote and don't have sort of any immediate plan to not be remote and sort of the technological structure of how we would return is still not a hundred percent nailed down. I, I just feel like there's, that's something that maybe there's, there's some unknowns that need to get answered before we can really discuss that in earnest. So with that said, Counselor Derby, would you like to read, read your?
Absolutely.
The, the resolution?
Yeah, thanks so much, Counselor Peak. And, and just to preface, you know, I, I don't want this to just be a ceremonial reading. I think that I'm hoping that the other counselors would agree and would, you know, support the fact that, you know, climate change is a, an oppressing emergency that we need to, to deal with. And as we move forward as a city, we need to be using our, our voice and, you know, our legislative power to really start hardening the city and start preparing for what the future is going to bring. So I'm hoping that this is going to be an affirmation of our support to really start working towards preparing the city for the future that we're living in right now. So with that, I will read the resolution as I pull it up here. So, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's kind of long, but this is important. So a resolution declaring climate emergency, whereas in a world facing the extreme challenges of rapid climate change, East Hampton residents understand the importance of climate change. East Hampton residents understand the importance of protecting the earth and its inhabitants, can envision a better, sustainable future and create and execute bold plans for a prosperous, prosperous economy and a thriving community. And whereas progress towards this future is underway in Massachusetts, which is among the national leaders on climate initiatives with over a hundred thousand jobs in the state's clean energy sector, and named a top energy efficient state for the past decade by the American Council for Energy Efficient Economy. And whereas national security experts agree that climate emergency is a threat multiplier contributing to the earth's sixth mass extinction of species, and the present level of global warming has triggered catastrophic changes to the earth's system, including increased wildfires, heat waves, droughts, flash floods, rising seas, and extreme weather, and continued global warming could further intensify the melting of the glaciers, polar ice sheet collapse, accelerating, accelerating sea level rise, super storms, hurricanes, mosquito borne diseases, water and food shortages, and civil unrest. And whereas East Hampton has engaged, has an engaged city government and has undertaken a number of important steps on climate and the environment, such as the East Hampton Closed Landfills Solar Project and Green Community Designation, such that the city is well placed to implement the critical transition away from fossil fuels to advance a robust, carbon free, equitable economy, and improved health and quality of life that will result. And whereas on April twenty-second, twenty sixteen, world leaders from a hundred and seventy-five countries recognize the threat of climate change and the urgent need to combat it by signing the Paris Agreement, agreeing to keep warming well below two degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels, and to pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase to one point five degrees Celsius. And whereas marginalized populations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and worldwide, including people of color, immigrants, indigenous communities, low income individuals, people with disabilities, and though the unhoused are already disproportionately affected by climate change and will continue to bear an excessive burden as temperatures increase, oceans rise, and natural disasters worsen. And whereas nearly four hundred cities, districts, and counties across the, countries across the world, collectively representing over thirty-four million people, have recently declared or officially, officially acknowledged the existence of a global climate emergency, including over twenty Massachusetts cities and towns such as Boston, Lexington, Acton, and eleven towns on Cape Cod. And whereas declaring the climate crisis as an emergency is a crucial first step for aligning residents around the urgency of the global climate breakdown. And whereas building a society that is resilient to the current expected and scientifically predicted effects of climate change will protect health, lives, ecosystems, and economies, and such resilience efforts will have the greatest positive impact if the most dramatic potential consequences of climate change are taken into account. Whereas declaring that the climate crisis is an emergency demonstrates that our government agencies acknowledge that addressing climate change will require emergency response at emergency speed. And whereas the crisis caused by climate change also presents a major opportunity to invest in the health, healthy energy, transportation, land use, and agriculture systems that will deliver both immediate and sustained benefits to all and reduce future risks from climate change. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city of East Hampton declares that a climate and ecological emergency threatens our city, state, region, nation, civilization, humanity, and the natural world. Be it further resolved, that the city of East Hampton affirms that human activity caused the climate crisis and that overuse of fossil fuels and the lack of understanding of other fundamental causes of climate change are the primary cause. Be it further resolved, that the City Council of East Hampton hereby declares that a climate emergency threatens our city and humanity broadly, and that a mobilization to meet this challenge is both a moral imperative and an unprecedented opportunity to stabilize the climate, remedy environmental harms, create clean energy jobs, and improve human lives. Be it further resolved, that the members of the East Hampton City Council call on city government and staff and all East Hampton civic groups, businesses, and residents to commit to a climate mobilization effort to bring net citywide attention to all the efforts needed to reach a sustainable course for the city of East Hampton, including reaching net zero emissions, protecting natural habitat and open space, minimizing the waste stream, moving away from fossil fuels, and the impact of diet and food choices on the climate. Be it further resolved, in, in furtherance of this resolution, the clerk of the East Hampton City Council send a copy of this resolution to State Representative Dan Carey, State Senator John Velez, Congressman Richard Neal, and request that all possible support and assistance in effectuating this regula- resolution be provided.
Okay.
I don't think that was a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I will make a motion to, what's the word I'm looking for?
Approve the res-
I will approve that resolution in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the climate emergency resolution. Any further discussion? Barbara, uh, Counsel Zaret.
I wanted to thank, uh, Counsel Derby for bringing this forward. I think the city fortunately is already heading in a good direction. We just had a very lively discussion about solarizing the city, uh, with the Honeywell contract. I think that's a step. Uh, we need to completely reduce our emissions. Um, I really appreciate that the counselor who brought this forward has been a pioneer, um, in reducing, um, carbon emissions in the city with ordinances around things like hybrid cars and electric cars and been, has historically embraced, uh, language that has, um, brought us to a more ecologically friendly and a more climate friendly city. Um, you know, this is why I think we're all need to be, this is the type of resolution where I think we all really need to embrace it and think about what kind of things we can bring forward to actually, uh, walk the talk, as it were, as I think someone, uh, described Counsel Derby's actions historically recently. Um, this is why recent things like reducing single-use plastics and picking things up and, you know, having things like a nip bottle bin in front of City Hall, uh, reevaluating our solar ordinances, preserving green space. We're doing all these things, but we, it's, it's still not enough because climate change happened yesterday. It's not happening tomorrow, and we're way behind on doing anything to fix it. So, um, uh, I think, I, I believe at least that my colleagues on the council wholeheartedly embrace these values and this challenge that, that Counsel Derby has set forth. I'm certainly happy to work with any and all of you, um, on, uh, legislation that has teeth to make this work. Um, so again, thank you, sir, for bringing this forward, and, um, uh, obviously that was a wholehearted endorsement of this, so.
Any other comments? Barbara.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Um, and then, other than that, uh, I think we have a bit of new business, which is something that I've always been really excited to work on because it's a personal interest of mine, uh, which is precinct redistricting. Um, so, uh, I would like to make a motion to move the, uh, precinct redistricting due to the twenty twenty federal census to rules.
Okay.
Motion second to move the precinct redistricting to the Rules Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Flood, um, just reminding you, you can only speak to the motion, not to the topic. But go ahead, Counsel Flood.
Never mind. I'll save it for the next.
All right, sounds good. Uh, okay, where were we? Had we started, Barb? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll, Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye. And thus concludes.
Awesome. Um, okay, so we have a couple of ad hoc committees. I don't know if there's anything new with ranked choice voting, Counsel Peak.
Sure, uh, we are working, uh, on finalizing the details of a mailer, uh, that's gonna go out. Uh, I, I don't believe that there's any races that are going to have more than two people, but our city does allow the use of ranked choice. There is, there's gonna be. Oh, they got in the last second. Okay, well then, it's important that we do this. Um, uh, I, someone got in right after me, I guess, jeez.
Are you running for mayor too?
No, no, but I thought I was the last person to possibly hand in my signature and that nobody could possibly.
Not going.
All right, well, what do you know? Uh, anyway, so then it's pretty important that we know how to do this, so there's gonna be a mailer going out about it. Um, and, um, that, uh, we just were finalizing the details on that and talking about some other potential, maybe some Zoom meetings, uh, that we could do in terms of, uh, sort of civic engagement. Uh, we, we've had a few people from the schools and the Council on Aging, uh, show up at meetings and, you know, give their thoughts. So, you know, at, at this point, it's really more about just making sure everyone, like, we've got the ordinance done. We're really just in engagement and education mode. Um, but yeah, that's all that we've got right now.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't think there's anything with senior tax work off, at least unless you've been meeting in private, Counsel Kuzinski. Hang on, Counsel Gomez.
Um, no, there, there is that, no meetings. However, there is a quick update. Wanted to say that there were at least a dozen different positions that were put together from, uh, the city, among at least four departments. And people are starting to get out there to do some work, so we'll have further report later. Thank you.
Awesome. Counsel Gomez.
Madam President, I just wanna ask if for the ranked choice voting information, is it gonna be a way that, that we can have it in different languages? Probably in Spanish or any other language because our population here in Somton, especially the Latinos are growing, and I think it's really important for their, our community to understand the process in their language too.
You're on mute, Tom.
I'll need to double check. I don't have it in front of me, but I do believe that we're, we have something saying like, for this in a different language, go to this address or, or something. I'm trying to remember exactly how we were gonna do that. But yes, uh, absolutely.
Thank you.
That is, that's a good thing to keep.
Okay. Counsel Flood.
Uh, also just want to encourage the use of East Hampton Media as a vehicle for getting that out, and I don't know if the committee would like some help in creating some sort of video. I would, uh, I would volunteer to meet with you guys. But I think for some of us who are visual learners, um, I happened to wander into Barbara's office and seeing her watching a video and I kinda got mesmerized, but it seemed to be very helpful. So, um, I just wanna lend my assistance to the committee in pulling it together. I am a member of East Hampton Media, so I have access.
Sure, well, we're meeting next week, and I, I definitely, uh, if, if you'd like to swing and discuss that, that would.
If it's appropriate at that time, sure. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, Ordnance Review Committee, Counsel Rothschild.
We are having our final meeting on September twenty-eighth at seven, and at that point, we have our, um, the final, well, we have the draft of our final report, and we're just gonna see if there's any other input before then and, um, vote to approve it that evening.
Okay.
That's it. Thus concludes.
Wonderful, thank you. We've done new business, old, but old business.
Hey.
Oh, wow, what did I forget? Oh, the, the conflict of interest, right, from, uh, Jess Allen. Is there anything we need to do there, Barb, other than?
Prove it. You've gotta sign it.
Oh. So, do we, so you'll send something to us?
It's right in your agenda. You, you need, you need to approve her request for the exemption.
Oh, so you have to, oh, okay, that was my question. Yep. Okay, so we have to, we have to approve her conflict of interest?
Yep. You did it for a Jana from the Housing Partnership not too long ago.
Okay. And, and what we're approving is that she has checked with what, the state ethics and, and has cleared it with them?
That, that she is disclosing her, um, her interests and that is not, um, so substantial that it wouldn't prevent her from serving on the CPA committee.
Okay, I didn't think we voted on that stuff, but okay.
Yes, because you have to sign off on it. It, I'll send it to you, don't worry.
I'll talk to you offline about it. Okay, uh, so the approval of the conflict of interest disclosure from CPA member Jess Allen, we need a motion on that?
Yep.
I will.
Just say so.
So moved.
Okay, motion is second on the, uh, conflict of interest disclosure. Any further discussion? Okay. Barbara.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
I'm gonna abstain out of a bit of confusion.
It, it, it's all in your packet, anyway. Okay.
Yeah, I'm reading it. I'm reading it, but I still, uh, I'm just gonna abstain.
Page.
I'm looking right at it.
Can we clarify something for you, Counsel?
Well, I mean, I, I understand she's cleared it with ethics, but she does work directly for Valley Community Development, and so would she be abstaining from any voting that might put money in their direction that would fund her salary? I guess the, the ethics piece is where I just, mm, I'm not quite sure.
Point of order, we're voting. Should we be going back and forth on this?
Yeah, I, I wasn't trying, I was, I mean, you're asking why I'm abstaining, so I was just trying to clarify.
Uh, Counsel Kuzinski.
May I suggest the pass for Counsel Flood? For the moment, until others have an opportunity to vote. She may have finished her reading by then.
I, I've read it.
She opted to abstain.
Yeah, I've just opted to abstain.
Okay. Sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
All right, that's it. Any further discussion, Barb?
So I'm sorry, can I just ask?
We got four more meetings, guys. We're gonna make it. Go ahead.
Tom, you were saying about the, um, therapeutic drug thing. Are you, are you planning to bring that up for a vote at the next meeting or I've just, or not?
Yes, but, yes, I'll be bringing it up for a vote, yes.
Even though it's the big, okay.
I mean, it's, well, maybe I'll, maybe if we, if we don't wanna, it's, it doesn't require a public hearing or anything, so.
No.
If, if, if it's the end of the night and it's way too busy and we don't have the energy for it, I can just not move on it till the next one, but.
Well, it's just if people are interested in being there, they should know if it's gonna be brought up or not. Just, just thinking about.
Okay, are we done?
Okay.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Barbara.
Uh, Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Gazinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Word, yes.
Okay, bye, everyone. Thanks.